Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the January 17th, 2024 regular meeting of the Kansas City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and ask that if you are able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Bezdon?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Here.
Councilmember Dothet?
Here.
And Student Representative Tanner is not present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselor, we'll get to the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. I'd like to call it your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with additional material revisions, requested additions to the packet, action add to item E5, Resolution Number 2024-04, public comment requested by the city clerk, and add to item H7, discussion, public meetings, remote participation, update memo requested by the city clerk. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move for approval of the agenda and consent agenda with the add items E5 and H7.
I'll second that.
Is there anybody that would like to amend the agenda or consent agenda at this time? Counselor or Vice Mayor?
Mayor Gabriel, I would like to remove, for introduction, ordinances 3391-2024 and number 3392-24 from the consent agenda and have them heard to the regular place on the consent, on the agenda as item five, or H5 and H6. And the intent of that is these items would be sent to planning and zoning and harbor.
Second. Ask for your notes.
Thank you. Notes consent requested, is there objection? Seeing none, the agenda is amended, particularly to the consent items listed on the consent agenda, H5 and H6. Is there any additional requested amendments to the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the clerk, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2024, brought to you by the city clerk. New business, action approval of bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. New business introduction of ordinance number 3388-2024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund for the city's joint participation in the Kenai Peninsula Borough's Safe Streets and All Roads for All Action Plan Grant through the United States Department of Transportation, brought to you by the administration. Ordinance number 3389-2024, accepting and appropriating donation from Kenai Senior Connections, Inc. to the Kenai Senior Center, brought to you by the administration. And ordinance number 3390-2024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriation in the airport fund to purchase air service development professional services at the Kenai Municipal Airport for costs in excess of budgeted amounts, brought to you by the administration. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to comment on any item that was on the consent agenda which was just read into the record? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to counsel. Was he announced consent? He announced consent was requested for the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Tonight, we have no scheduled administrative reports. We have no scheduled comments. Under unscheduled public comments, is there anybody from the general public that would like to address counsel at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Ms. Nelson.
Marion Nelson, Kenai Art Center, president of the board still. Just a couple of heads up things. We have a few new things scheduled for the future. One is talking about advanced Christmas trees for next year. We bought some trees at Home Depot that's 75% off. They're in our nude storage shed, which is just proving it's worth over and over for us in many ways. So they're sitting in the box, they're in the boxes and they're in the building. And what we will do is decorate those trees entirely, and that whole tree will be for sale as a fundraiser. There's just six of them, so it's not like it's a ton. And they'll be probably on display during, possibly before the mural show this late fall. And also, we never had a glass show, and that's now also loosely on the agenda. We'll see when that takes place. There's always glass that's entered, or there's glass that's entered in many shows, but I happen to have a connection with somebody who does some outstanding, unique glass work, and it prompted me to think about expanding on that, and everybody was in favor of it. Then, I think quite a few of you remember, see if I can do this without crying, Alan Borison, Peter Kalifordsky. Alan and I, with Peter, did a creative process seminar a long time ago when Alan and Peter were, excuse me, people that don't know, I just cry, I'm not falling apart, I just cry. Alan and Peter did kind of a dog and pony show for a couple of years or before Peter's book came out, or when Peter's book came out, which is just marvelous. And that particular event was great. It had a number of panels that had five, six people on each one that represented different parts of the arts in our community, dance theater, et cetera, et cetera. And I've always wanted to do another one. I could never quite talk Peter or Alan into doing another one. He said, "Oh, you bite off more than you can chew." Well, I will admit to that, but I've always wanted to do it. So I've been talking to Brian, who has frames and things, and he is interested in being the moderator for that, so we've got the ball kind of started. We'll see how far it rolls. And I don't know exactly when that would be, but, you know, sometime during the year. Many other things, moving along. Any questions from anybody? By the way, you're talking about a possible new public safety building that's 50, because that's 50 years old. Guess how old the Old Town Art Center was, former public safety building, if you will? Comparable. Look at what shape that's in. You better get busy on this.
Vice Mayor Naxted.
Pardon me?
Well, I was going to ask you about glass art, and what do you envision that to be? I mean, is that blown glass?
Not blown, definitely not. We have quite a few people that work with glass in the area, and so we get entries, you know, throughout the year, sometimes more than others, other times, and they, for the most part, are really quite good. Well, the pieces that I've been shown via email from a friend of mine, from the Kirka family, and a number of us know the Kirkas that grew up here, whole bunch of kids, and one of the members of their family has sent me images of the pieces that she has done lately, and they're quite stunning. One is an elephant that appears to be about like so, kind of an elephant portrait. And then she has other, you know, other, many other kinds of subject matter, and who knows what. But I think having a whole show would spur the local glass artists to do more, do something different, as was shown when we did the metal show. We'd never had a metal show before, and fantastical things came in the door for that, way more than we anticipated, including at the very end of the day, a big bed frame. I mean, who would have guessed? It's quite interesting. Side note on the glass, there's a lady who lives out Funny River Road, and she always participates in shows where she feels comfortable entering her glass pieces, and she's been doing this for a long time. It's interesting to hear her talk about the glass, because she and other glass artists nationally and probably internationally, they do a lot of repairs for old glass, stained glass windows for churches. And consequently, you have to know the sources for that kind of glass, and there's a lot of different kinds of old glass that go into those windows, as you might guess. And that glass is only available from certain places, and da-da-da-da-da. So that's just a detail that I've learned from dealing with those people. So I am looking forward to this glass show to see what happens with that. So you can get ready, get your glass work ready.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Marion. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the Springer?
Hey, guys. Okay, just a couple of things. So our first community business lecture series went really good, and we're going to keep doing those every month. We do have a free family movie night next week on Tuesday. We're going to show Super Mario Brothers on our big screen there, and so that's going to be on Tuesday night. And then I'm going to be heading to Juneau for the legislative fly-in for the Alaska Chamber, so I'll be able to represent Kenai businesses and talk to some of the legislators while I'm there. And so that'll be on the 24th and 25th next week. Also coming up, we are going to start our first Friday artist series on February 2nd, so Susan Watkins is going to be there and then be joining the row, so we all can do our first Fridays. I think it'll be really great. Also, a really important luncheon coming up on February 7th is Commissioner Bishop. She's coming up to talk about education priorities, so if that's something that is of interest to you, I would attend, because then you can ask questions directly. And then finally, in February, on the 24th, we're going to have a special lecture. Dorothy Gray is going to be doing, I just got it today, the history of Kenai's national historic landmark, the Holy Assumption Church, St. Nicholas Chapel, and the rectory in Old Town. She's going to do a whole presentation on that. I thought that'd be a really special luncheon to have, so, yeah, that's what I've got going on.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Springer? Thanks, Samantha. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to address the counsel at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? And with that, we will move to public hearings. First up, we have item E1, ordinance number 3385-2024, accepting and appropriating a donation to the Kenai Community Library for the purchase of library materials and software for room and event scheduling. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3385-2024.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Seeing nobody in, chambers are online. Bring it back to counsel, deliberation, comments from counsel? Vice Mayor Naxted.
I'd just like to thank the friends of the library for their generous donation for this program.
I think you speak for counsel there when you say that. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yes.
Councilmember Bezdon?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3385-2024 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have ordinance number 3386-2024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund and municipal roadway improvements capital fund to conduct an assessment of city, street, and lighting. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3386-2024.
A second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Seeing none, we'll bring it back to counsel. Comments, deliberation from counsel? Counselor Duffin.
Maybe just from staff, if they can give us a little bit more detail of what this is going to get us.
Ms. Reebag.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Dothet, you know, this, I think this is a continuation of our discussion from our capital plan. You know, what we've experienced here at the city over the last few years is we continue to increase the amount of funding that we're putting into annual repairs of our streetlights, and we don't seem to be getting over the hump with some of the problem. I think it is due to the age of the infrastructure that's in place. What we're seeking is some funding to get some consulting, to examine our systems, look at where we're at with those systems, propose some solutions, and help us scope projects that we can then use, I believe there was $400,000 included in the capital plan, to actually go out and then start affecting those repairs, and that will give us the bid documents for contractors to then respond to. So this was, you know, the options we discussed when I met with our public works directors, you know, we could put those design funds in the FY 2025 budget. That really wouldn't mean we'd be doing any fixes until probably the fall of 2025, where I think under this plan, if we get somebody out there and do this planning, we could get some of these repairs started this summer and this fall with funding appropriated July 1 to actually do the actual construction or the work. That was our intent, and that's why we chose to bring it forward at this time and recommend your support.
Further questions, Counselor Duffin?
Yes, thank you for that. I think it's a wise decision with as short of our construction season is, and this allows us to get it out for bid sooner, and so I'll definitely be for this. I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad to see we're starting to move forward with this.
Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this, but I kind of have a general question on the problems that we've been solving. If it's at the luminaire in the J-Box, that portion, or is it the conductor between, or is it the whole system? What typically have we been fixing? Band-aiding, I suppose.
Ms. Reebag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Naxted, I'll take a stab at this and let Public Works Director weigh in as also, but I think it's a variety of different issues that we've been addressing, from, you know, the actual light fixture heads. We do know, or we do believe, we have some line breaks out there that have to be identified and isolated. We've had a lot of breaker-type issues in the control panels. We're converting a lot of our lighting systems from traditional metal halide, high-pressure sodium systems to LED, and the controls aren't, just aren't functioning like I think are as reliably as we would like. Some of these older systems in the city are two-wire systems. They don't have a third wire ground. That weren't, that wasn't the standard when they were installed, which is causing some significant issues. So it's really about getting some experts in here. We don't have electricians on staff at the city to help us identify all of these problems and what the solution, long-term solutions to them are, and then moving forward. I don't know, did I miss anything, Scott, or?
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Counselor Daniel?
Just to be clear, this $80,000 is the assessment side, and that $400,000, that project, if approved, would be to do the work for '25, yes.
Ms. Reebag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Askin, that is the plan at this point, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Further questions? I can do have a call. How much of our total street lights have been converted to LED? Do we have an estimate of what we have and what's left? And I guess as a follow-up to that, is there, would there be an intent when we do this scoping to try to upgrade the rest of the system to LEDs? Mr. Curden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good question. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't have the exact number. I know when we do the budgeting, in our narrative within the budget, it does break out the number of lights that we have and the number of those that are LED. I just don't recall them off the top of my head. I'm thinking it's around half. We're probably at 50% range right now. I will tell you the troubles we've been, we have been replacing some with LED retro kits, and the repairs that we're addressing now, they're not simple bulb replacements. If that was the case, these would have been done a year ago. They're not that simple of a repair. It's why they're not done.
Well, and a follow-up, would there be, is there going to be an element to try to address what's not LED moving forward with this scoping?
So initially, our intent is going to be to address the problem areas. So if I have old technology in a neighborhood that's not currently causing us problems, I'm not going to focus on that area at this time. I'm going to focus on the areas that we, you know, continue to see issues with, woodland subdivisions, fathom, stellar, inlet woods. Those seem to be the recurring problem areas. So we're going to focus there first. It will be focused on newer technology. That could include the light poles, luminaries, like you were talking about, but it could also include lighting control panels, breakers, things like that as well.
Load centers, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Further questions, comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call it all.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yes.
Councilmember Bezdon?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance 3386-2024 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have item E3, ordinance number 3387-2024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund and public works department, street divisions, professional service budget to review and update the city's roadway improvement standards. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3387-2024.
Oh, second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number Seeing none in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to counsel. Comments, deliberation from counsel? Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that is dearly needed in our city, and I'm glad we're finally doing it. We ask people, developers, when they're going to build a road, you know, to spend a hundred thousand dollars or more on a road, and our design standards are quite lacking, and it's unclear what's necessary, and this will, you know, we'll invest $25,000 into those details that will make that clear, and for anybody that is looking to develop in the city, so they can see what needs to be done. And it would be my hope that once we get some standards for our roads, that we might also kind of start putting together a standard book. Maybe this is a question, that would include, you know, water sewer, storm sewer, all those kind of things, you know, just a regular construction standard book. And I hope that, and that's kind of a question, but the other question would be for this is, where is this going to reside?
Ms. Reebag.
Maybe it's in there. Is it in code, or is it going to be referenced?
Ms. Reebag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Naxted, so currently, the design standards for city roads is in Title 18 of KMC. You know, the preliminary thought at this point is to remove those design standards from code and include those in a specifications-type manual that would be approved by counsel, likely by resolution, still giving the approval for those standards to counsel, but making their amendment and change and updating a simpler process. And yes, this is our first step, you know. When we look at, when, you know, it's been emphasized from counsel that, you know, we want to encourage development within the city, we want to encourage, you know, new homes to be built and developers to come into town. When you look at our road standards, currently, we have a one-size-fits-all standard for road construction in the city of Kenai. It doesn't take into account what that road is serving. Is it serving a few homes on a, in a subdivision? Is it a main thoroughfare? So the intent of this is to reexamine all of our road standards. We have some great examples. I think the Borough has some good examples of, you know, in their design standards. And it's just to put a document together, I think, again, is going to be more useful to developers, be more predictable for developers, and will assist their design professionals in knowing what our standards are and being able to put forward those designs. I think over time, our intent absolutely is to bring some water and sewer standards into that as well, whether that's, you know, the exact standard to install a fire hydrant or for water main connections or sewer main connections. It's, the intent is to grow that manual over time, and again, just keep progressing the city's permitting process to help encourage development here in town, so.
Counselor Bezdon.
Thank you, Mayor. So will this correct timeframes when you see some of the subdivisions that have been built in the city? Some of them, it's 20, 30 years before they're completed, the roads are completed. Will that be part of this also? You know, talking about, so some subdivision, you see that it went recently, paved, utilities, everything's done. Some of the subdivisions, we see that's still incomplete.
Ms. Reebag.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bezdon, I don't know that the standards necessarily are going to dictate the timeframe. That's generally dictated by the subdivision installation agreement that we enter into with the developers. But what it will do is, I think you highlighted a couple of other key points. You know, we have some subdivisions here in town where developers are installing that the roads are paved, and we have others that are being developed where they aren't paved, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of consistency in how we've been applying that or not. I think what these standards will do is allow us to establish, you know, again, what the minimum expectation is for installation of a road. It will also give contractors or developers the opportunity to request variances from those standards, justify why and explain why, and then, of course, then that would be the decision of the city whether to grant those. But, you know, we have, you know, a developer that was working out in 3W subdivision this summer, looking at tying in out there. You know, our current standard says that road should be paved. The road on, you know, one end of this isn't paved currently. Does it really make sense that that should have to be a paved road when every other road around it is unpaved? Those are the types of things we're trying to address by creating this manual and standardizing. We think it'll become more predictable for developers, and I think predictable is what business wants to do business.
Further questions? So I guess my question is, so this will be the typicals that are, that would be developed that we would get for different typical road sections, depending on the type of roads that are being built and where they're being built. But as far as it being implemented in code, is it, would this, do we require like a third-party inspections or anything at this point for new road construction, or would that be added, or how does that work? Ms. Reebag.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. That would all be included, yes. So currently, you know, our design standard requires, you know, design by a licensed civil engineer with, you know, stamped drawings and elevations, and then inspections along the way before we accept those into service by the city. None of that is going, we're not proposing any change to that. We're just wanting to look at the standards themselves and make some changes there.
Very good. And I support this. I agree, this is a long time coming. I remember an issue we had probably a decade ago, and I think Henry was on council there, but regarding an issue that came up because of a lack of a standard that we had, or didn't have, I guess you should say, so certainly support this. Any other comments? Clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Dothet?
Yes.
Councilmember Bezdon?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3387-2024 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2024-03, adopting goals to guide the preparation of the fiscal year 2025 annual budget. Pleasure, counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-03, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2024-03? Mr. Bannock.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dwayne Bannock. I'm proud to be a resident of the greater city of Kenai, 1908 Aliac. You have my prepared comments, but if I may, go off script and to paraphrase.
But you can comment on this one if you want. It's, he was so excited. Yeah, it kind of surprised me when you jumped up there, so, all right. All right. So what we're, what we're discussing here is adopting goals to guide the preparation of the fiscal year twenty, twenty-five annual budget. And I believe there was a work session just prior to our previous council session regarding this. So is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to comment on resolution number twenty, twenty-four, dash, oh, three? Seeing none in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Councilmember Baysden?
Just a comment for administration, like the process. I, I know it's been a few years since, since you've established this, and you put this in front of us, and I think it's a good tool to work with.
Agreed. Further comments? unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number twenty, twenty-four, dash, oh, three is adopted. Now we're on item E five. Resolution number twenty, twenty-four, dash, oh, four, requesting the state of Alaska make a meaningful increase to the base student allocation for public schools. Pleasure at council. Councilmember Dothet?
I move that we, for resolution twenty, twenty, sorry, let me get the number here. No, I'm the one, there we go. Twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-four, dash, zero, four, base student allocation, move forward with that.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Very good. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number twenty, twenty-four, dash, oh, four? Mr. Bannock?
It's been such a long time since I've been here. Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members, thank you. I am Dwayne Bannock from the greater city of Kenai, at nineteen, oh, eight, Aliac. Aside from my scripted notes, going back to your last ordinance, not your resolution, the words in, with respect to Neil Diamond, except for the names and a few other changes, you can talk about my objections to this resolution in the ordinance that you just passed. Standards, measurements, and accountability, all missing from this resolution. Quickly, you've seen my notes, I think, but I'll read them quickly. Your authority vested in the city's charter allows you this privilege of this resolution tonight. Yet there is nothing, I repeat, nothing, in your charter that makes this subject part of your official duties and responsibilities. The specific request, when you get down to the bottom of the resolution found in section one, the Kenai City Council requests the state of Alaska make meaningful increase to the base student allocation for public schools, is both undefined and incomplete. undefined. What's undefined? Meaningful? What qualifies as meaningful? Are you talking about dollars? I assume you are. Are you talking about hundreds or thousands of dollars? Are you talking about millions or billions of dollars? As written, this resolution cannot be measured financially. It's also incomplete. I have a business saying, never bring your boss a problem without an, without a solution. Tonight, the sponsors attempt to define the problem in the fourth, fifth, and sixth wherethes, yet the resolution is embarrassingly silent on any specific resolve other than make a meaningful increase. No funding source identified, no budget diversion identified. This resolution has no desired measurable outcomes defined. In the eighth whereas, the eighth whereas says we need to maintain class size, okay? What is the correct class size? What is the desired class size? Providing for student resource needs. What needs are currently being unmet? And what is the financial obligation of meeting such needs? What alternatives have you investigated or offered other than more cash? Nothing is defined or even recommended. This resolution as written is a modern-day version of Oliver Twist's, please, sir, I need some more. undefined and incomplete. Although funding for public education is nary part of your responsibilities as council members, I will respect your desires to add voice to a statewide political topic. I only ask that you speak responsibly on behalf of myself and our seven thousand neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bannock? Councilmember Raisin?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bannock, do you not love children? What's the problem here? Just kidding.
I've, I've been an advocate for education. I consider a little bit of what I do to be educating. I have advocated for more pay for school teachers, yet I have advocated for better results. And our school district, and in fact, all of Alaska's school districts, we fail miserably when it comes to counting back change. Less than twenty-eight percent of kids in Alaska are proficient at math. Twenty-eight percent, less than twenty-eight percent. We fail. We are failing. Without a new idea, this resolution is misplaced.
So I guess my question would be, would you be in, in favor regardless of how this is written philosophically to an increase in the BSA or no increase, or where, where do you stand on the topic of the BSA, I guess? The underlying purpose of the resolution?
Sure. So I spent a little bit of time tearing apart the Alaska Constitution. The Alaska Constitution goes into extreme, extreme detail of funding. It's less than one sentence. That's how the concept works. Money is not the problem. Let me repeat that. Money is not the problem. Need more money? I'll get you more money. That's not solving the problem, though. This resolution addresses what we think are problems that I don't know are problems. I look back to my high school. I counted thirty-five kids in class. Today, we freak out at thirty. Who says thirty kids is the, besides our senator, who says thirty kids are too much for a class? I don't know. I'm above-average student. I was thirty-five in one of my classes. Went back to my old high school annual to try to find the answer to that. So maybe at the end of the day, when we have taken the apple cart labeled education and turned it upside down and rebuilt it, and we establish then that our base student allowance formula allocation, the formula in itself is part of the flaw, the way the state discriminates regionally, and the fact that we have poor outcomes. Those are all of the problems that must be fixed, must be addressed, and then write the check for that amount of money. To short answer, maybe.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Naxted?
Thanks, Dwayne. You've obviously done some research back into, but into the state, the state code. But what specifically, or generally, however it's appropriate, does the BSA, what does that pay for? Is it just for education, or does it include any other stuff? Your mic, your mic went off.
I apologize. I can't give a coherent answer to that question. I wish I could. What I can tell you is that I began to learn much about the BSA itself. There are six, six qualifying factors in the BSA. There are seven members of the council, six council members and one mayor. That's a very measurable thing, right? How many kids go to Kenai Central High School? That number has absolutely nothing to do with what the base student allowance is for money that goes to the Kenai Peninsula School District. The formula itself is so complicated, Mr. Naxted. You could figure it out. But it is an, it is an unbalanced formula, and because you are an above-intelligence person, when you start with a flawed formula, how can your outcome be anything other than flawed?
Councilmember Sonar?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Mr. Bannock, you mentioned that you were reading through the Alaska State Constitution recently. Actually, I got through a lot of it today, but I did not get to the one sentence that you referenced. You referenced one sentence.
One half of one sentence.
That basically said money is not a problem, money is not an issue for education system?
It says that the state of Alaska shall provide and maintain for a school system, and it shall be open to all students. And then there's two other sentences that talk about what money cannot be used on. That's it. There's three sentences. Article seven, subsection one. Three sentences. First sentence, there shall be a system funded by the state for operation and maintenance, and it shall be open to all the kids of the state. Second sentence is, the state may do other educational opportunities. Third sentence, the state may not spend any public funds on private or religious education. Three sentences, the only part of the three sentences is half of the first sentence.
Yes. So why, in your opinion, is money not an issue for funding the schools?
So if we were going, if we take this example and put it to anything else, anything that you do on your budget, pick a building, a, take building a dog park, for instance. There's a plan for building a dog park, and it may have been a little bit different this time. But nevertheless, let the money be what the money needs to be. If there is a plan that shows an outcome, a measurable, verifiable outcome that gets me more than twenty-eight percent in proficiency in math, I will cheerfully, cheerfully pay more money. I've actually developed a plan for additional funding for school districts outside of state funding. It will cost you more money. It will cost me more money. It's a plan that I have authored. We like going to the state of Alaska because it doesn't really affect us. It's no big deal. So what we need to do, this is the last step of a rebuild, not the first step. If you do this step, and if our legislature unwisely jacks fifteen hundred more dollars that the senate is calling for, you'll never address the problem.
I do understand that the funding formula is a problem. There's six factors in it. The first four are multiplied, factor five is added, factor six is added. I can't stand the formula. Okay, I'm going to move on from the formula. Because you've, you've lobbied about this twenty-eight percent now, and I'm curious, is that a post-COVID statistic or a pre-COVID statistic? And where are you getting it from? Because I have been searching for statistics, and what I'm reading is that there's not a lot of post-COVID statistics data available right now. So where are you pulling that twenty-eight percent from?
AK star, I apologize. Not used to a microphone that shuts off automatically. AK star is the test. The results, the last ones that I have, are definitely pre-COVID. And every single professional that I have spoken to in the education world says we are worse off today than we were pre-COVID when it comes to grades and outcomes. AK star is the result. Twenty-eight percent is the Kenai Peninsula Borough. And here's the real bad news. Twenty-eight percent is one of the leaders in the state. So we are the best, nearly the best, of the worst. We like to say we're the best of the best, right? I like to say the greater city of Kenai. I don't even like to say that other city, but it's definitely lesser. That's for Mr. Cox. We are the best of the worst. And by rewarding it financially, in what scenario in your life that you measure that you have a twenty-eight percent proficiency in, do you pat yourself on the back and say, I'm doing such a good job, I give myself more money? There is not a single tie-in that I have identified that says more money equals greater outcomes. Neither have you. You haven't found one either, because if you would have, you would have put it in your resolution, because there's not one. Set aside this resolution, please. Don't vote it down. Do what you did a year ago wisely. Just set it aside.
It got voted down. Yep. Councilmember Dothet?
Can I have a question? So first question, are you a teacher?
I'm not a professional educator.
Okay, just a question.
Are you?
Nope. And that's why, another question is, we are funding the last three years, the schools, status quo, right? With one-time funding, correct?
I don't agree with that statement.
So where is the funding that we're coming with the last three years? How are we running our schools?
Well, so roughly, roughly, I'll give you an education. One-third of it comes from local funding. Two-thirds of it comes from the state. Of the two-thirds that comes from the state, roughly one-half of that number comes from the federal government through block grants.
Okay. So the one-time funding that's happened three years to cover the budget deficits to maintain our schools?
Didn't cover the budget deficit. Just read the newspaper, listen to the news. Didn't cover the deficit. They're crying we're thirteen million dollars upside down. The one-hundred-and-seventy-five million that was appropriated last year would have covered the deficit. What happened to the one-hundred-and-seventy-five million?
So what I'm saying is, we have a budget with the, our BSA right now, and for the last three years, they've added one-time funding to fund our schools to what they are right now, correct?
I think it's fair to say that there's been three years of one-time funding.
Okay.
We're running a deficit, and one of the reasons that you're running a deficit and allowed to run the deficit is you could make an arguable case that school districts cannot maintain their own carryover money fund balance. Local governments can maintain fund balance. School districts are subsets, which is in violation of another portion of the state's constitution that I wasn't prepared to talk to you about tonight. But they are relying on their slush fund. And that's why the governor made the comment, until we know how much money we have in the slush fund, we're going to cut it in half. Now, a wise person would have already asked that question before and then made the decision. But we're not here talking about the one-hundred-and-eighty-seven million. We're here talking about your resolution, which is incomplete and undefined.
I guess I'll just address those comments really quick. It was purposely left undefined. I'm not on the school board. I'm not an educator. I'm not a senator, and I'm not a House of Representatives. I feel that those are all people. I'm not the.
Are you a road builder? Are you a road builder?
No. Can I finish my sentence?
Well, you just voted on a standard for building roads.
We voted to pay somebody to come up with a standard.
Okay, standards.
So those are the people that I would depend on to determine what they need to operate our schools. And that's why it's just saying, we know there's an address of an issue where it's been twenty, since twenty seventeen, since they've gotten any real pay increase, and with inflation of twenty-three percent roughly, and since twenty seventeen, that's showing that there is a deficit. There's issues. They've had to have one-time funding just to maintain the schools as is. And that's why it's open. It's open to them to determine it. It's not my job to say, you know what, we need this exact number, because I didn't do that. I'm just saying that I see that there's a problem, and that's why it's open to this.
Mr. Councilmember, you're making a great point from my opening line. This isn't in the purview of the Kenai City Council. It's not. That's why it's not in your charter. If it was in the charter, then I would have absolutely no standing here. It's not against the law. It's not against the charter. Be very clear on that point. But there's a reason that you shouldn't have this, because it's not in your charter. This isn't your business. Roads are your business. Sewers are your business. Police, fire, animal control, dog parks, those are your business.
Schools are in our school, our, our community. And for us to say that we don't have a problem with our school funding, I think is turning a blind eye. And that's why this is brought up forward, is it says.
I didn't, I didn't say that. I didn't say we have a problem with our funding. I didn't say we don't have a problem with our funding.
So this is all about funding.
No, it's not all about funding. I don't know what it's all about.
This is, is to help with the BSA. That's what this originated from. If you don't agree with how it was calculated, that's another whole topic on itself. But this is about school funding and the foresight that, yeah, you know what? It sounds like we might have a problem in our, with our school funding, and if they can come up with a solution that will help that, and in the long term, it will help our schools, that's where we're just saying, hey, you know what? I agree that there's probably a, an issue with our school funding, and we need to address that. And if they can come up with a way to come up with the funds responsibly, then that's their jobs to come up with it.
I guess what I would go from here, Councilmember, if you have a question, that's fine. I don't think we need to have a debate between Mr. Bannock and councilmembers on this. So if you have a specific question regarding his testimony, then certainly ask that.
Yep, no, I'm good.
I respect the resolution process. I truly do. I'm glad that you're there and I'm not. The word probably doesn't belong associated with a resolution that you're getting ready to vote on. Thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember? Thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannock. Is there anybody else that would like to testify to Resolution Number twenty-two-four dash oh-four? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to council. And I guess I'll either open up with, um, one of the sponsors, either Mr. Daughtry or Councilmember Daughtry or Daniel, whoever wants to lead off here. Councilmember Daughtry?
Sure. A lot of it was brought up. But basically, this resolution was brought forth because I saw the resolution that the Borough Assembly had come forth. They wanted a lot of more detail. And I purposely wanted this not to be so much detailed with the specific numbers. Wanted to leave it more open. Um, there's a lot of other people involved with school districts and state fundings that can come up with the exact numbers of what might be needed. Um, but I do see that there was a need for, uh, funding. And so that's why I brought this up and left it broad purposely. I'm not in the boat to say exactly what they need. I'm just there to say that, yeah, I, I see an issue, and I think we can, I all believe that, yeah, there, if there's some reason that we can physically responsibly allow them to increase and not do the one-time funding, then that's why I brought this up. And that's why it was purposely left as broad as possible.
Further discussion from council? Councilmember Basen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bannock, for your testimony. Um, we had this similar situation in front of us last year, and I was a, I didn't support it. I'm not going to support it this year. I don't see in any way how this funding helps the education of my child in the school district here. You know, if we want to talk about what the funding will actually do, I mean, you could see all the red shirts up in Anchorage, uh, with our senator at the podium and what took place up there. And it's not about the education of our children at all. It's about those individuals and the funding they need to continue getting their pay. We're in a district that has declining enrollment. Uh, we're in a district that just passed bonds a, a couple of years ago that are going to build more infrastructure for a declining population and, and have to spend more money on administrative buildings and things. Again, that's not going to have any outcomes for our kids. And they're going to threaten us this year again with closing pools and those type of things because they don't have the funding. Um, they do have funding, and, and I've, I've been around, uh, in the system to where I, I know how they, they move money into their, into their, their budget. They, they will have funding for this year. Um, this is, uh, this should be at the state. This is, this is why the governor and the senate and the house are having these conversations, and they will again this year. You know, again, my question is, is that anytime that, that we put this forward, who are we going to, who are you asking to take it from? The, the governor's budget already had a billion-dollar deficit this year. That's how he balanced it. Um, so there's two billion dollars left in the savings account. He's got to take a billion dollars out to balance his budget this year. And that means we have to take this from somebody. So what Alaskans are we going to take it from? Are we going to take it from the Alaskans who, um, are going to get little or no permanent fund? Is that who's going to pay for this? Or are we going to raise revenue, which means a state tax or a sales tax? It has to come from somewhere. They are running out of revenue. And I want to see us, if we're going to institute more funding in the school district, I want to see some kind of outcomes in the classroom, because this will have zero outcome for my child in the classroom. And that's why I was against it last year, and I'll be against it again this year. And it doesn't make sense for this body to pass it.
Vice Mayor Nixon?
Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Basen used, uh, Councilmember Basen used the term "we," and I think that's probably the royal "we," everybody, not this body. And, um, and, and it did come before council last year, and, and there was, there was some measurable numbers in there, and that came from folks in the legislature that that was what they were going to push, and that's why that, that was in there. And the, uh, the meeting pretty well digressed, and did a little bit tonight too, into a school board meeting. And, uh, real, it really isn't what we're doing here. And frankly, I've never been to a school board meeting, come to think of it. But you know what? I think a lot of the questions that people are asking here, I think that's where you had to go, is the school board. And, uh, and, uh, and pursue that, and how the money's spent, or, uh, how to improve education, all that. But I can tell you, when my kids were in school, however low the scores, uh, grades might have been, they succeeded, and they did very well. And, uh, and, uh, they, they would do well right now, too. And, and they also would be afforded perhaps some monies, um, to be able to do some, some extra things that they were able to do then. They were able to do, uh, get it, their CNA and do a number of other things, you know, in the medical field and whatnot. And that's what that is. But, um, the, uh, it takes money to do that. The implementation of the money is for other minds, other bodies, and I, and I would encourage anybody here, um, especially if it comes back next year, we could talk about how, how you went to a school board meeting and, and, and tried to do that, or talk to a legislator about where that money came from. Those are things that other people need to determine, and it's not for this body to do so. But I think that, uh, um, even though it may not be in our bylaws and whatnot for the city of Kenai, exactly like Mr. Bannock's suggested, we do have schools here. We have seventy-five-hundred people here, and a big percentage of them are parents with children in school and kids in school, and they're our constituents, and they're the ones I'm looking out for. And, you know, bringing some more money in, uh, is one thing, and then the next thing is the implementation. And I think as leaders, we can do that individually and work on that.
Further comments? Councilmember Daughtry?
I'd just like to reiterate that, that a lot of information was brought about where the money's going to come from. That's where, if you want to be a senator and the House of Representatives, those are discussions for that. We're, we're not trying here to figure out where the state can come up with it. I'm just simply trying to get something across that if they can figure out a way that makes it physically responsible to be able to make this happen, that, and they can find some more, uh, financial, uh, means for the schools, then that's where it's from. If we want to get into where it's going to come from and how they're going to find it, then I guess run for senator, representative. But for me, this is just on the city level, just saying that, hey, yeah, we see a need.
Further discussion? Councilmember Daniel?
And echoing Councilmember Daughtry, it was written as a very generic, we support our, you know, our educator, educators and our, um, school system, because we have a lot of constituents here that benefit from this, uh, the, the system. And it takes a lot to run, run this district. But I would cha-challenge our fellow councilmembers that are on the fence. If you're a no vote, what could you do to make it a yes vote? What, I mean, take a look at this thing. Is there something that you could look at and change a whereas, or add a whereas, uh, that might be more palatable for you? We work very well together as a body. I, I remember just recently we passed a resolution, uh, all of us did. We all agreed on that. Initially, a few of us didn't like, uh, that was, um, supporting, I believe, some of our, uh, set net, set netters, and we were able to change some of those wherashes that made it so we could all agree on it. And so I would challenge you, if any of you are, can have some concerns, let's make this a, a, a yes for everybody.
Further discussion? Councilmember Askin?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Um, thank you, Mr. Bannock, for your comments and, um, Mr. Basen. At the risk of sounding like we're at a school board meeting, um, I agree with, um, both Mr. Basen and Mr. Bannock's comments, and I don't like being the best of the worst. I want, I want to see ways that we're going to address improving our school system. If that requires increase in teacher salaries, I'm all for it. But this isn't giving any of that. It's just saying we want to give them more money, and I can't support that at this point. Um, not that I'm against providing more funding. I want to see where it's going to go and what it's going to do. Thank you.
Further comments? Councilmember Sonard?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. This is such a complicated topic. And I'm not, I'm going to try not to have, if I can call it a Marian moment. Last year, I did not support the resolution for this. And it wasn't obviously that I don't support our schools, or I don't support our students. I absolutely do. Okay, I'm going to talk about my reservations first. I think it's totally appropriate that the Borough would issue forth a resolution to the state, because it is the Borough that votes upon appropriating money to the school district to add to their budget so that they can complete the funds that they need to operate. We don't perform that service. So our resolution, for the most part, is just a feel-good moment, to be honest. Because we do nothing about appropriating funds for education. Okay, so there's my reservation. My experience this past year, and it's been a year since we have discussed this. Um, and I'll just have to resort to what's in my wheelhouse, which is my area of music. There were five elementary schools this summer without music teachers. The jobs were posted in the spring. Not one of them had one applicant. There are five elementary schools right now that do not have music teachers. There is a high school right now that does not have a music teacher. There very well could be another school that doesn't have one either. There's no applicants out there. There very well could be, I, I, you look at the other fields, special ed. That's not in my wheelhouse, but maybe there's special ed positions that are going unfilled. Maybe there's other academic areas that are going unfilled. I can tell you, I served this community for twenty-six years as a public educator. I gave up a lot to come here. I gave up being near my family. My family's in the lower forty-eight. I gave up, I gave up social security. Most of you may not realize this. Our teachers, and I think some of our other public servants, do not get social security. So man, this, this is just, this is complicated. So you add in the fact that our school district is not getting applicants for jobs. There's positions right now, and I just, I have to resort back to the music field, because that's my wheelhouse. I think we have, there's KB Chel, Nakiskiel, Mountain View L, Kaleidoscope, which is a school of the arts and sciences, and they don't have a music teacher. What in the world is going to happen to the music programs at Kenai Middle and Kenai Central in five years with no elementary teachers? Do you think we're going to have a marching band or a drum line in our parade in five years? This is, okay, so I, thank you for letting me vent. Thank you for giving me that moment. The issue, and this is not something we can, we can address as a council body. The issue is very complicated. In my opinion, the, the issue is systemic all the way to the US Congress. As to why, we cannot fund our public schools right now. Because Congress reneged on the ninety-ten deal that they made with us at statehood. Okay, all right, I'm not going to go down that road. It's going to take too much time. But back to some of the concerns, that if we bump up the BSA, that that will not affect, it will not physically affect your child's education. Maybe it won't because of the silly funding formula, and maybe it won't because of all the decisions that other people make that are out of our control. However, if we don't do it, we don't stand a fighting chance of getting teachers up here from the lower forty-eight. We, we have positions in this district that are empty, that are not being filled, because the teachers will not come. What's going to bring them up to the state of Alaska if they have to give up social security? If they don't have a retirement package that's competitive with a lower forty-eight state? If they don't have a salary that's competitive? And yes, as a conservative, I, I totally appreciate Councilmember Askin's comments about the product, the, the test scores, this and that. I get that. But the bottom line is, if you want the tests, i-if you hire a quality teacher, your test scores are going to go up. That's, that's the bottom line. And the only way to get a quality teacher is if you have an opening, and it doesn't matter what it is, for math, science, music, you have an opening. You need to have five or six people interviewing for that one position. So you can pick the best of the lot. We have no applicants for a lot of our positions. That tells me right then and there that, yes, Alaska is expensive. And if you look at the corresponding figures, maybe it looks like we're spending a lot on paper. But obviously, we're not spending enough to attract teachers up here to fill these positions. And if the bump up of BSA... Okay, look, let me backtrack to social security for just a moment. Out of our monthly paychecks, instead of paying to social security, I would get a deduction for the state of Alaska retirement system. The district, and I'm not going to give a number because I, I, I'm not sure. But I know the district was also required to make a comparable payment on my behalf to the retirement system. Obviously, that money comes from the district. My salary came from the district. The district spends approximately eighty percent on teacher salaries and teacher retirement. If the BSA was increased, then theoretically, the Borough, the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District would have an opportunity to raise teacher salaries to being a little bit more competitive. I have no clue how the retirement system works as far as that, and that's why we elect people into these various bodies to do this work for us, because that is really not in our purview. But theoretically, with a bump in the BSA, these issues could be addressed. And then it's, it's kind of, it's a trickle-down economy. You put your money in your quality teachers, and you put your money in a quality retirement system. Does it happen overnight? No. Would it affect the students this year? Maybe not. If you have a senior, then they're graduating and they're going off on their own vision. But eventually, it's going to trickle down to the districts, to the schools, to the classrooms. Once you get quality teachers into these positions, and eventually, you're going to grow your test scores. Eventually, things are going to get better. Things were really good, educational-wise, back in the seventies. Why? The economy was booming. And it, it surfed in through the eighties. And I understand here in the late eighties, there was a, a, a local nosedive in the economy, came back around in the early nineties. But I think that wave has, has gone. And what we are experiencing now is several decades of not attending to this. I, I appreciate you for, for letting me rant. I appreciate you for letting me do this, because I, I am, I am very torn. On one hand, I want results. On the other hand, I want to know that if I say, if I put my verbal commitment out here that, yes, I'm going to support this resolution, personally, I want to see that money go for teachers in retirement, because I know ultimately, that's the game. Because if you don't have a quality teacher in a classroom, it doesn't matter how new the laptops are and how new the computer system is. The computers aren't teaching our kids. That teacher is teaching your kids. And that teacher had better be qualified. And I'm here to tell you, we're not getting the teachers. So something needs to be done. And yet, I'm hesitant to say yes, because it's like, okay, I'm giving them permission to write a blank check, and where is that money going to go? Is it, is it going to go for administrative buildings? Is it going to go for, um, administrative increases in salaries? Or is it going to actually benefit the student by putting a quality teacher in their classroom? Or is it going to actually benefit the student by putting a quality teacher in their classroom? I don't know. And I don't have the answers to those things. But to sum up, my dilemma is that we have to be attractive to get teachers up here. We just sat through, we did workshops with our own city employees, and did a study on what would make our city more attractive to getting people to interview for our jobs and stay. I wish our school districts had that luxury, but they don't have the type of money to, to do those things. But what are we going to do to attract teachers in and get them to stay for more than one I mean, this is an absolutely huge problem. Do we need to fund our schools? Absolutely. Is this resolution one of the steps in the process? I don't know. Because here again, we don't appropriate money for education. So is it just a sense of a feel-good moment? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dan.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Sonar. I said Ms. Sonar, she was my band teacher years ago, sorry. But on those lines, I'm glad you brought that up with the music teachers. Mountain View lost their band, their music teacher, Mr. Dillon, last year, yeah, last year or two years ago. And he was there for many years, kids all loved him. And he took a job in the lower 48 because he got a deal he couldn't refuse. And I can't fault him for it. It was great, a great opportunity for him. But the kids all loved him, and they haven't been able to find a replacement. So there's something we said for a competitive package for, for, for teachers here. And hopefully, this would be a step in the right direction. And another point to the buildings, the buildings are all owned by the borough, and the borough makes those decisions with that bonding size. It's not really the school district's deal. So it's not to help, you know, funnel some of those concerns, it's that, that money would be for the school district, and whatever the school district does in that purview. But again, it's not up to us. We're just saying, hey, we see an issue, we would like to see some resolution, state, help us out. What can we do here?
Councilmember Dalton.
Yeah, and just a few little things, interesting facts about the, the jobs and job openings in the state. There's 1,100 empty teacher positions right now in the state last, we were data. 1,100 open positions. And then we look at the rough deficit of the school district, they're saying is about 13 million in short this year on their latest budget, roughly. That's 95 jobs roughly is what that works out to, that we wouldn't have funding for. And a lot of what I hear from teachers is the inability to know if they're going to have a for-sure job. And that's where that one-time funding comes in. You know, every year, are we going to have, we've done one-time funding three years. Here, an interesting idea was brought up, what if we just took the one-time funding that we've had for three years, average it out, and that's our BSA increase? Because we've cut checks at the last minute for three years in a row to get a budget passed. What if we took those, and then we don't have to have the one-time funding? I think a BSA increase is what the goal is there, would be to get away from having that one-time funding. And then you could show your teachers, you're not giving them pink slips, so you're not having to hire first thing in the spring, or wait till middle of the summer, and all of a sudden, you're trying to hire somebody. Because by then, they've, they're not moving to Alaska at last minute to come up here. They've got a job down south where they didn't say they got a pink slip every spring. So I, I think this has a lot of, that is employing good quality teachers, and a lot of our teachers are retiring or taking jobs in other states and moving out. And I don't hear a lot of new teachers moving in. So those are just some, some statistics to think about, but, you know, getting rid of that one-time funding, I think would be the ultimate goal of a BSA increase. Again, they seem to come up with cash for a one-time funding for several years in a row now. Can we just make it steady and come up with some kind of a thing? That's for them to decide. We're just here, and yeah, it was said it was a feel-good. Do, would it feel better if I were to say, hey, I agree that we need to be able to stabilize our funding in our schools? Yeah. It makes me feel better to say that.
So I'll just make a few comments, mine will be fairly brief here, because I, I do, I do agree with Mr. Bannack, is that I look at things before this body, like the degrees of separation, or was it this within the scope of what we are here to do? And I, I sort of get a little bit, say nervous or queasy or anything, but uncomfortable, I guess, in some ways when we start getting outside of our, what do we consider what our normal duties would be as far as running the, the, you know, the policies of the city here by going, okay, let's weigh in on savings. We've got a representative, we've got a senator, and we can tell people, hey, look at, you know, if you advocate for the BS, increase in BSA, go talk to them. They're the ones that are going to Juno to advocate that, or go to the, again, with the borough and the borough assembly for them to pass the BSA, this resolution, which they did unanimously, which I understand why they would do that. But again, that's just to start out with, yeah, I do, a little bit uncomfortable with saying like, why is this before us, and why are we considering it? Because it doesn't look good, the optics aren't well, good-looking either, if it just gets, goes down on a no vote. That being said, it's, it is what it is. It's before us now, so we're considering it. And I asked Mr. Bannack after he gave us a really, I thought, detailed, eloquent, you know, overview of what he saw wrong with the wording of the, his teacher-like, as a matter of fact, of what he thought was wrong with the, how it was structured. And I get that, I, you know, and I understand the reasoning for the vagueness. But I did ask him, where, do you, do you not, do you, underlying, do you support the BSA? And the answer was, maybe. Because I think at the end of the day, we can agree that, you know, going, one-time funding, and I, I agree with that, one-time funding is not going to be the answer. If that's the formula, the formula is flawed, I understand, agree with that. But I would say that if we're going to, we, and I, we can look at inflationary effects over the last couple of years and say, that alone should be a reason for, to make a meaningful increase to the BSA, so you're not going that. I think that covers part of that. So I do, um, do agree. Unfortunately, some of the other comments regarding, um, performance, you know, performance thresholds tied to, tied to funding. I'm all, I'm kind of like that, it's like, you know, do we, are we getting what we're paying for? I don't agree that 28% is a, is a number we should have, you know, strived to get to or above that for standard, for passing, for passing grades. I don't know what happened. My, I, I went to KIWI Peninsula School District, schools. My wife did, our three kids did. I got two kids in, in school, in the school district, or grandkids rather, and one starting here next year. And I want them to have the opportunity that I did, because I think we had good quality schools then, that we had, I don't, I know our passing, our level, our competency level wasn't, was higher than 28%. I don't know what the issue is, and maybe that's something that should be addressed, you know, undoubtedly. Are there social issues, is it teacher, quality teacher issues? I don't know. Those are questions that need to be answered from a different body than ours. I don't think we're, we're in charge of that. I think certainly, as private citizens, we can weigh in and say, yeah, those are, you know, certainly understandable, you know, issues that we feel, you know, you know, education is so important that we, we have to have a good product at the end of the line, when these people, when these kids graduate. So we'll all stop there and just say, it is what it is, it's before us. The school district, like I said, the borough assembly supported that, our, our representative on the school board supported it, Mayor McCickie did. So for that reason, I, I will be supporting it for some, again, I'm not, I don't necessarily like to be in this position, but it is what it is. So, and with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So just to build on what you just said before I lose this thought. Because this resolution is not necessarily in our purview. What if we added a whereas to where it's saying, basically, we recognize that, but we support our local school board member who supports this, we support our borough who supports this, and just basically add ourselves to the latter? Does that make sense? Instead of just doing this on our own, because this is not in our lane? But if we... Is that, does that make sense?
I mean, if, if that was a question, I would think it would be better addressed to the sponsors of the legislation, but let them weigh in on it, or have discussion if there's amendment to be made. Councilmember Dalton.
Yeah, I'm totally for looking at amendments that would make it more comfortable for people to take on. I'm not exactly sure how, we might have to take a quick recess on that for just to figure out wording on that, but I could see something that we might include that previous support, that we were supporting it with previous supporters being X, Y, and Z. As far as just to address the not in our purview type of thing, I might miss a city, but I know last year, when these same kind of things came up, Seward, Homer, Soldana, all passed similar support of the BSA increases. So it, it was in other cities, we're not going outside the box and doing something that other cities haven't done before. So just, I would say it is in there, and we, we, we're justified for doing something like this. But as far as the wording on a, a whereas on that, I guess we need to discuss on how to do that, but I'm for it. And then, just real quick on the, the 28%, I'm always wary on one statistical number coming from one source. In my recollection and previous issues I've had with statistics, you can really skew numbers to whatever data you want it to sound bad for. And so, until I did some more research, I don't know if I'd be going off as the holy grail, the 28%. I'm sure you can find three other spots on the internet that say something different. So I know our kids do really well in school, I'm really satisfied with the way our school district is. But anyway, as far as the whereas concern, I think we can come up with something that would, would support that.
Councilmember Beasley.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, let's add amendment that we're going to either take the PFD, spend savings, or raise taxes. Add that into it also. Put one of those in it, where it's going to come from, since we're going to play imaginary that we're a school board, and we're trying to influence something. So let's make sure we add those imaginary, where we're going to take it from, what Alaskans do you want to pay for this, just like all the other craziness that's going on right now? We have a balanced budget here that we work on, and we do very good here. They don't. So let's, let's give them some direction, and where you, who, what person do you want to pay for this? Which Alaskan? The Alaskan out there that's trying to support their family? And we're going to take their PFD, or we're going to spend the savings, so we have to tax our kids for it? That's what I want to know. Because this isn't going to change anything. So put that in there too, as a friendly amendment.
Councilmember Dalton.
Is that a true amendment we're requesting, or do we want to discuss? Or would we like to discuss the first?
Well, there, there's not an amendment on the floor, proposed amendment. If you'd like to take a, now's a good time to take a little at ease, if you wanted to discuss an amendment, I don't have an issue with that. If not, we can...
Yeah, to address Councilmember Sonar's first request, I think we can take a quick at ease and see.
All right, let's take a five-minute at ease. All right, let's take a five-minute at ease.
Back on the record, apologize, that was a little more than five minutes, but with
that, we'll go to Councilmember Sonar. Looks like her light's on. Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to add a new final whereas to read. Whereas the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly has voted unanimously by resolution to support a BSA increase, we hereby support their request for a BSA increase. And further, to strike Section 1 and replace it with a new Section 1 to read, that Kenai City Council supports the Kenai Peninsula Borough request that the Alaska Legislature increase the BSA.
Second. Requesting unanimous consent?
No. Okay. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Dothett?
Yes.
Councilmember Beazden?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
You have five yes votes, two no votes. That motion passes.
Back to the main motion as amended, further discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
On the main motion as amended.
Correct.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Dothett?
Yes.
Councilmember Beazden?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar?
Yes.
You have five yes and two no votes. Resolution number 202404 is adopted.
Thank you. That brings us to item H5, ordinance number 3391-2024, amending the Imagine Kenai 2030 Compartment of Plan Land Use Plan Map for certain parcels from industrial to mixed use. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce ordinance number 3391-2024, refer the ordinance to the February 12, 2024 Harbor Commission meeting for the recommendation, refer the ordinance to the February 14, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for their recommendation, and to schedule the City Council public hearing on the ordinance for February 21, 2024. Request unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? That has all the relevant information needed, very well. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, was there unanimous? Okay, very good. Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, that's moved for introduction and moved to Harbor Commission. Next up, we have item H6, ordinance number 3392-2024, amending the Kenai zoning code to add a new zoning district, working waterfront, that's parentheses WW, and amending the official zoning map to certain parcels from heavy industrial to working waterfront or conservation zone district. Councilmember Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce ordinance number 3392-2024, refer the ordinance to the February 12, 2024 Harbor Commission meeting for the recommendation, refer the ordinance to the February 14, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for their recommendation, and to schedule the City Council public hearing on the ordinance for February 21, 2024. Requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second that.
Are you got any discussion on the motion? Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, so moved. Next up, we have item H7, discussion, public meetings, remote participation update. Ms. Sainer.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. What you see here is a review of what we discussed at the last time and our current practices, and with the implementation of having virtual participation available for any board members or anything, any staff that would be attending, it would not change the dynamics of allowing the public. What we are intending to change is the interruption to the meeting of calling for public comment from either sides. When you call in from Zoom now, it actually gives you instructions on how to raise your hand and how to mute and unmute yourself. So the listeners are getting that information from that side, so we wouldn't have to add that on this side. And if a member of the public were to raise their hand, I would indicate to you that there was somebody that had raised their hand, rather than asking if there's anybody online regularly.
Ms. Ruhl.
Yeah, so basically, what we're proposing, in case some of you haven't read this, is we're going to set up, so we've already taken care of the potential for Zoom bombing. So what we would, what we're proposing is to set up a link for every regular city council meeting, every planning and zoning commission meeting, and every other commission body meeting. And there's already code that governs how many times council member or P&amp;Z commissioner can use remote access. For the other council members, there's some commissions where we have to counsel so many meetings because we can't even get a quorum. So until that changes, we would propose to just have that be, look, if they have to, if that's the only way they're going to attend, at least we can get a quorum and have a meeting. If it becomes a problem where we see some abuse, where people are staying home and not coming to the meetings, then maybe we can address it and limit remote participation for those other commissions. And again, for the public comment, like Shelley said, we're going to smooth out that process. The other thing is, is we've had almost no public comment online at council meetings, and virtually zero at other commission meetings. So we don't really see it as an issue, if the platform's available, just to let people use it in the meantime. So that's kind of what we would propose going forward, basically no change, and just trying to smooth out the process.
Councilmember Beazden.
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds reasonable. I read through the, through the memo that you put out here for discussion, and I agree with it.
And Mayor, if I may, for Councilmember Beazden, the best part is there's no cost to the city.
I did pick that up too, thank you.
So just real quickly, is there, is there going to be, does this require further legislation back to us to codify or anything?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Currently, code has, we have planning and zoning code, but at this point, there is no additional changes needed. We already have the Zoom platform, we'll just go as business as usual, and you and I can change how we talk about the public process.
Okay, very good.
Unless the council requests something in writing, I think doing business like we have been over the last few years has worked.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if there was, that you had clarity from us if what that was, but if there's, if everything's status quo, then that's, I'm fine with that. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you. This is different than kind of where we were going, I think, at our last meeting when we discussed it. My position still is, in respect that it's, like Mr. Bannack was here, the best presentation is right here and face-to-face. Secondly, might be written. This is a good compromise, I think, and really part of it was, it's third or fourth best to do it that way, you know, by Zooming, I think, but it also is a distraction when we have to stop the meeting every time for every item, to see if there's somebody there that wants to, you know, to comment on it. And this, this would eliminate that problem, problem for me. It's just, it's just a difficulty. So I do, I do support the change, and I appreciate the thought you put into, into this for us. Thank you.
I'm going to give credit where credit was due. Most of this came from the attorney, Bloom.
So, Councilmember Dalton.
Yes, I just, I think it's very important to keep Zoom, and I'm glad we're going to continue down that road. Any way we can get any kind of public to participate in any way, whether it's in person or in Zoom, any kind of a public comment is important. And some of the hotter topics we've had, if I refer back to the And some of the hotter topics we've had, if I refer back to the topic, the chicken ordinance, there was actually quite a few people that did it on Zoom when they felt it was important. So anytime we can get any kind of public comment and make it easier on them, I think it's important to keep that, and I'm glad we're going to come to a compromise on this. And I think it is a good idea to not have less of those interruptions and less times we have to go, is there anybody else online? I think that'll smooth things out for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're satisfied here. See nodding of heads? Okay, that will take us to commission committee reports, council on aging.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could, I'd like you to defer to the Vice Mayor. He sat in for me for the last meeting.
Councilmember Naxted.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of meetings here recently. The council on aging met on January 13. They started out with a work session, I think, like all the other commissions. City manager, attorney, and clerk were all three there for the work session. And the five items that were discussed, we're reviewing the five-year summary on council on aging activities. There's quite a few there, really. They reviewed the council on aging survey that was provided to all commissions and committees in them. They reviewed the bylaws and rules of procedure for council on aging. The council on aging is different than all the other commissions, where they're not a commission or a committee. They're a council on aging, which is a different thing, and they have bylaws. So it's a little different, and I'll get back to that in a little bit. They also reviewed Chapter 1.90 Standards for Boards, Commissions, and Committees, and they reviewed the Policy 20.020, a commission committee on council on aging procedures. And lots of good discussion with that. Then they got into the meeting right afterwards, the regular meeting, and they elected a chair and a vice chair. Keneers is the new chair. Rachel Craig is the vice chair. Rachel Craig has been the chair for two terms, and the way their bylaws work, she couldn't be the chair again, so it cycled through. Their new business discussion had to do with the work session, and the main thing that came out of that in discussion was that, and it came from the city manager primarily, but they concurred, would be that the council on aging become its own, it's become a commission. Basically, it becomes codified. Where it's in code, there, there's one place to go look to see what, what the council on aging does and how it works, and it's consistent then with the other code for all the commissions and committees. So the administration's going to work something up that it will go back to the council on aging for their review and discussion, and that will come back to council at some later date for us to review.
Did I capture all of that, your discussion with them?
And their next meeting, I think they're going to have a work session, too, but it'll start at 3:00, James, so it'll be on February 8.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
Airport Commission. Airport Commission had a similar work session with the same three individuals. They discussed the same items, though they, they don't have bylaws, so they reviewed the municipal code, Chapter 2120, for the airport commission. And there was quite a lot of discussion regarding to administration from the, from the airport commission on how they like, they appreciate being involved and want to be involved with more information as it comes through, you know, with some of the budgetary items and things like that, that they're, you know. And I think that that was, that was, a lot of that was hammered out. I think the administration's going to come back with them with some ideas on how that might, might happen, and they seem quite satisfied with that. It was a very good, very good meeting. Then they, they did go on to their regular meeting and elected the chair and the vice chair. And as stated, status quo, Glenda Fieken remains as the chair, and Paul Manilga is the vice chair. Then they had actually four discussion items. They had a laydown. The first discussion item they recommended was, well, they, well, they didn't recommend, they just did a review over what their work session was. The second item was, they set up a tour to go to the Alaska Regional Fire Training Center on Saturday, the 27th. And so that would be, I don't remember if they picked the time, but they're going to do that. I think the council, if anybody wanted to go see the building. Oh, yeah.
It was at noon on Saturday.
It was at noon on Saturday? Okay, well, if you want to go see that building inside and out, there you go. And would the, would the public be invited, too? Anybody that is listening?
Yes, it would be open to the public as well.
Okay, perfect. The next item had to do with recommending approval of Tim's janitorial for services, janitorial services at the regional fire training center. The last item, it was a laydown, and it was, I'm going to read it. It's, it's actually in our packet for, for the next meeting. It's, there's an ordinance in there appropriating funds. And I'll tell you what it is. It's recommending city council enact ordinance 3390-2024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the airfield fund for purchase, air service, development, professional services at the Kenai Municipal Airport for costs in excess of budgeted amounts. And that sounds like a mouthful, and you still don't know what it is. But, but what that is, is it is appropriating funds, and it's appropriating funds for, and it's a study. And it's something that the airport has done in the past. It's been probably since 2007 or something like that, I think, and it's, it's what they call a leakage study, essentially. And it has to do with, not a leaky airport, but leaky passengers? Anyway, those that might go to Anchorage to go fly somewhere, they drive up rather than, than fly, or they, maybe they're just going to Anchorage, or they're going to Anchorage by flight, by air, and going somewhere else. And it, it's a study that does this, and essentially, it, it is, it's a tool for future grants and whatnot that the airport and actually the airlines that we have would be able to, to benefit. I sound like I'm speaking for an ordinance that we're not talking about yet, but this is what that was about, and there was quite a bit of discussion about it, actually. And, but I think it, it sounded like it would be something that would put our airport in a very good position for various type of grants that we've received in the past. Mr. Ubank is, you brought this forth. Was there anything that I, that I missed in that, that report, my understanding?
Ms. Ubank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor Naxted. You know, you know, the leakage study is to determine basically the travel market out of the Kenai Airport. The next step after the, the study would be to approach potential air carriers, to seek a letter of interest, to explore other airlines operating out of our airport. And what we're predominantly targeting is, is, is direct flights from Kenai to destinations probably in the Lower 48. And then the third, if we can generate a lever, letter of interest from a carrier, is to apply for what's called a SCADZI grant, which is a, a small community air carrier development grant through the federal government. And these grants are awarded to assist local jurisdictions or small jurisdictions in securing passenger service from airlines. And they can be everything from, you know, providing subsidies during the development of a route, to help airlines establish a route, to promoting the Kenai Airport for these types of travel. So what this really is for us is taking an opportunity to look at potential new markets for air travel out of Kenai, to determine if, if the market is there, if, what size it is. This isn't just going to focus on city of Kenai. This is going to focus on the area that the Kenai Municipal Airport is serving, which, you know, obviously, the consultant will help us determine that, but we feel it's, it's likely, you know, the entire central peninsula, as far south as Homer, could be, you know, on the way to Anchorage, Cooper Landing, even as far as Seward. These are people that could choose to come here to do their travel, like I said, direct to the Lower 48. And, you know, we think that population is probably in the 40,000 to 50,000 people range, and would like to see what, what the market is actually, looks like, and then approach some carriers to see if there's any interest in potentially investigating whether Kenai's a place that they want to do business.
Thank you. I guess it's one of the more thorough airport commission reports I've ever done. But thank you, and I think the note from, is $34,000, and that would come out of airport funds. And that was, that was, that was recommended by the commission. Our next meeting with the airport is on February 8.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The Harbor Commission met for a work session and meeting on January 8. We discussed the survey that we recently completed, and I believe Harbor was one of only two that all of the members participated. They agreed on recommendations from the administration, and then they met immediately after and further discussed the survey and elected as their new chair Lisa Gabriel, and vice chair is Jean Reveal. And our next meeting is February 12.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Parks and Recreation met on January 4. They had a work session and then a meeting. During the work session, they reviewed Kenai Municipal Code 19.05, which is basically the Parks and Recreation Commission. Their 19.05.020, their duties and powers, and they did some tweaking on Item C and Item D to reflect that their main function is advisory, because the code did not reflect that. The code insinuated investigative powers, which they really don't have. So they tweaked that, and I learned something new that the committee may have up to two non-resident members, two non-city of Kenai resident members. And then during the meeting, Grant Wisnewski was appointed chairman for 2024. Savala Kasana was appointed vice chairman. They reviewed their five-year activity list, and then they also voted in the tweaks that they had made to the Kenai Municipal Code, that 19.05 section that they worked on. And the director reported that they were very happy that all the decorations got up before the Christmas Comes to Kenai Parade. That was their goal. They met their goal. And they have been grooming ski trails, and they have been helping out removing snow from around fire hydrants, which is usually kind of what the fire department does, but they've been lending a hand and helping out with that. And I also learned that if somebody's interested, you can adopt for the winter. You can adopt a fire hydrant if you want to keep the snow around it, and it's an official volunteer position. There you go.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission?
Our meeting was canceled due to lack of items for the 10th. They will be doing another one on the, it's the 24th coming up next week. I haven't heard anything against it, so I think we're going to be, that one's going to be on. So I don't forget again, just put it out there. I will be gone for the March 13 meeting. So if there's somebody who would love to take over the planning and zoning meeting, let me know. Just put it out there so I don't forget again. And then that's it.
Thank you. Beautification Committee?
Yeah, that's my break. Yes, so Beautification met the 9th of January. There's also a work session before that. Looks like administration's been very busy doing these work sessions. Beautification is kind of in a fun spot, trying to find their path with what they're going to do, since they're, you know, not a, they're a committee, and so they're kind of in this weird spot. They don't really have anything codified of what their exact role is. They're kind of born out of a, a group of people that said, hey, we want to get together and, and do this. So hopefully, with the help of administration and potentially council, we might be able to get some support and figure out where their purpose is. And I believe that administration will come back next meeting on the 6th for some recommendations and ideas of what they could find that could help direct that process. It was a really good discussion, a lot of ideas, just trying to figure out which way to go. And following that work session, the meeting was held, and Chair Dothet was reelected, and then Vice Chair, what? Not that chair, sorry. That's confusing, right? So Sarah Dothet.
The better Dothet.
Oh, well, I wasn't going to say anything, so, yes, Sarah Dothet, to be clear, so, was reelected. And then Vice Chair Warner was elected, so, very exciting. And like I said before, the next meeting is February 6. I actually will be out of town, so I asked that Dothet maybe to cover, but I don't know. Henry had some really thorough reports, much better than mine, so maybe I'll have him do it.
Do you really want to listen to me that long?
I won't be here. I will be here for the, for, well, if I, as long as I make it back in time, I should be back in time. We're going on a trip. I should be back for council, but I don't mind listening to you, Henry. I like it. It's thorough. I like it, so. Potentially, or Burns, one of the two, Hawaii. We'll see.
So, I reported to the mayor, I don't really have a lot to report. I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Naxted for filling in for me at the last meeting of the work session and meeting. And I heard he, I heard he had like a 30-minute meeting or something like that, which is, yeah, 45-minute meeting, which now gives me something after eight years or whatever it is, something to aspire to, I guess. So I want to thank, and hopefully, we had a good holiday weekend. I did witness something that apparently only happens every 32 years. People might wonder, was that a comet or, you know, something like that? No. The Detroit Lions won a playoff game. And if anybody knows me, they know I'm a Detroit Lion, long-suffering Detroit Lion fan, so very happy to say that. And I wish, I look forward to our joint meeting tomorrow with, with the native, their board directors. With that, we'll go to the administrative report, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, a few items to report on. We'll start with bluff erosion. Public Works Director Curtin and myself, this morning appeared on Kenai Conversation on KDLL. I can tell you when they tell you you're going to have an hour-long conversation to talk about rocks. Scott and I thought, there's no way we're going to make it through this. We ended the conversation, I think Riley said it was 59 minutes and 49 seconds, so we filled an entire hour.
Can we take a quick at ease? We have a little technical. Sorry.
Nope.
I saw that pop up there, and I was wondering. Mr. Ubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Continuing on with bluff erosion. So I can tell you that the, the bid period closed with the Corps on January 11. And I can tell you that the Corps is in the process of reviewing those proposals now. We did reach out last week and have a conversation with some Corps officials, and to be respectful of their process, they can't release a bunch of information. of their process, they can't release a bunch of information. So that is what I'm able to say at this point. We're hopeful that they'll get through that review, perhaps even by the end of this month, and we'll be able to share some additional information. But the bid period did close, and they're in the process of reviewing those proposals now. I wanna give a shout-out to Samantha at the Kenai Chamber. She put on her Kenai Community Lecture Series. She did actually the first presentation, it was on public speaking. We actually had some city staff, some of our staff attend that session. It was great training. It's right here, it's free, it's local, and I think it's a great service to the community that the Chamber's putting on, so I think, I want to say thank you to her for doing that. Annually, our Police Department and Dispatch Center go through a process by which the officers there elect an Officer of the Year. So this is an individual that was elected by his peers as the Outstanding Officer of the Year. This year, it was Trevor Miller. So I'd like to recognize Trevor for that. The dispatch goes through the same process, and I believe probably the police vote also on the dispatch as well. There's actually a co-dispatchers of the year this year, they had a tie in the voting. They wanna recognize Gabe Boyle and Jen Savley as the dispatchers of the year. So just, I think it's important to recognize employees, they do a great job for the city, and I think the biggest honor, again, is to be recognized by their peers. We have a new police officer that we have hired, Officer Reed. He has either left or will be leaving in the next few days to attend the Public Safety Academy in Sitka, so we'd like to wish him the best of luck. I believe it's twelve-week academy chief?
Sixteen.
Sixteen-week academy. And then also at the Police Department, Sergeant Coleman has been accepted and will be attending the FBI National Academy. It's a ten-week academy designed for training and education for supervisory personnel in law enforcement. I think it's a pretty prestigious thing to be able to go to, and we're excited that he was accepted, and is gonna be able to go for that ten-week period. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ubank? Vice Mayor Naxton?
When the, when you get releasable information on the bluff bids, would that be something that you'll provide, like a press release or something, so we'll all know about it?
Mr. Ubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Naxton, yeah, I I would like to do a press release. It just will have to be at kind of the Corps' discretion here. I think it's really interesting, they, the Corps, actually, all of their employees have to sign a nondisclosure agreement before they can begin the review process. I mean, so it is very regimented, and, but we will release as much information as we can, as as it becomes available.
Just as a follow-up to that, were they able to, were they able to tell you how many proposals they received, Mike?
No.
Okay. Any further questions, City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Attorney, Mr. Blum.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blum? Seeing none, we'll go to our City Clerk, Ms. Sener.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I have no comments, I'm available for questions.
Questions of our City Clerk? Seeing none, that'll bring us to additional public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Ms. Nelson?
Bye-bye without congratulating Kenai Cards Hockey Team for beating so hard.
Yeah, I did hear that, and thank you for that. We didn't, we didn't have our student rep today, so thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, that's always a victory. I remember the very first year that I coached Kenai High School hockey, first game I had was against Soldana, and we didn't, we were expected to lose, but we ended up winning.
Did you switch numbers?
Yeah, well, no, I ended up going into the school, next thing, the principal there, he said, he said, it doesn't matter what happens the rest of the year, it's been a successful season after one game, so. Is there anybody else I'd like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to our City Council Comments, closing comments, Councilor Daft.
Not too much, couple little things. Just, we are on track, it sounds like. Things are moving forward at the Chamber with the remodel on the the museum, so to speak, artifacts area with the Kenai Sea Indian Tribe, and we're hoping, tentatively, sometime in April possibly, to have some kind of a soft reopening with that, with all the new artifacts out in display. It's kind of the schedule we're looking for. No later than May, but hopefully, hopefully, April, if everything goes on. So that's exciting, and it's coming to fruition. I think that'll be good, good update for that. The, with the help of city staff, we do have two-hour parking signs down there on Kenai Avenue now. It's a small, seems like a small thing, but it's gotten a lot of good PR for the city. People are really happy about it. Basically, in a couple of spots where it used to say year-round, no, no parking on Kenai Avenue down there with beach access, there's now some two-hour parking spots that they can sit there, and then during dip netting, those will be changed to no parking for just dip netting, and then, but people will be able to go out there. Mrs. Geller at the Senior Center brought it to my attention this spring when she was trying to watch her son hooligan fish, and how frustrated she was that she couldn't sit down there and watch him, because she was afraid she was gonna get towed. And so with that help of the city, we were able to do that, and she actually sent me a really funny picture this weekend, her and her son were able to go down there and took a picture in front of the sign, how happy she was with it. So it's little things like that 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 kind of turned out kind of neat, and I'm glad to see that got done. Just a bit of a wise advice, be careful out there with your children and snowmobiles. There's not a lot of snow, and my son, my fourteen-year-old, decided to take a little bit of a jump this weekend, and we spent the the weekend in the ER, and he will be in a full-back brace for the next six to eight weeks. He broke his L3, so be really, really careful out there, and make sure they know not to be jumping, there's not a lot of snow out there. The ground is pretty hard. Expect to make a full recovery without surgery, but it was a scary weekend for sure, so. That is it.
Councilor Sonar?
Thank you. I wanna thank the administration for all their preparation in, that went into presenting the workshop information and data to us. That was a lot of work, and it is appreciated. I also want to thank Mr. Curtin and your department. I've been walking on the lot and extension, and I really appreciate that it's been plowed this year. So, thank you. And that little extension road is used by a lot of people, bemaids, and I'm pretty sure it's probably getting plowed so you can access the manhole that's down there, but the walkers appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Congratulations to the officers and the dispatchers, that's awesome. That's what keeps our Police Department number one, for sure. Great meeting tonight, good discussion. Thank you.
Councilor Daniel?
Thank you for being here tonight. I do have a little funny story for the Chief. I did, you're gonna love it, it's good. I just wanna say you you have some of the finest officers. I had a headlight out when your officers contacted me. Can't remember who it was, she was very professional. All my paperwork was in order, I did not pull the City Council card, and she let me have a wonderful evening. So anyways, they are out there in full force, doing a wonderful job for the city, and I really appreciate that, that we we have some wonderful officers here doing a good work. And thank, and thank you to our city staff for all the hard work you do with keeping things up and running. I know it's not an easy job, Mr. Curtin, thank you for addressing the streetlights. People are, I know it's not just you, but people appreciate that. I look forward to working with the council administration on the budget. I know it's not gonna be easy, and no, we don't have infinite money, and I, it's gonna be hard to pick which projects go forward, but I definitely appreciate that we can work together to solve some of these issues.
Councilor Basen?
Thank you, Mayor. Good meeting. I live in the neighborhood with the City Manager, and I just want Ms. Nelson to know that I have adopted all the hydrants in my neighborhood. I've took the clearing on personally, and I've taken them all on. Thank you for that reminder. There are no hydrants in my neighborhood.
I was just, I was just gonna ask that. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Naxton?
I thought you were gonna just leave it at that, but, you know. Well, I am looking forward to tomorrow night's meeting with the Kenai Sea Indian Tribe at six, and we'll, I'll see you guys then. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Seeing we don't, tonight, we have no executive session or pending items, seeing all the business for this body, we adjourned.